I'm going to call the meeting in order. We rise and place allegiance. Give the roll call.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Nakko?
Here.
Mr. Sheen?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Getche?
Yeah.
Kelly, do we have any who signed up for public appearance?
Negative.
Do you have any school community communications? I'm going to turn the meeting over to Cameron for the student representative's report.
Student activities has been extremely busy this past month for community service, school-wide events, and club activities. Our City of Lights Parade float was a big success, winning the prize for the most creative entry. The Barbie-themed down home holiday float featured a two-story dream house, complete with a slide from the second floor into the kiddie pool below. In addition, members of the greater Lowell staff and student body marched in the parade with students carrying the banners for the city. In November, the Student Council and National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society partnered to sponsor a Thanksgiving food drive. Together, they collected over one thousand pounds of food to donate to the Greater Lowell Tech Food Bank and the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. The freshman and sophomore classes raised sixteen hundred dollars from their butter braid bread and holiday pies fundraiser in November to defer the cost of future field trips and activities. Their next events included cocoa cookies and cards, community service afternoon, and a field trip to Chunky's to see the new Wonka movie. Beginning December eighteenth, Student Council is hosting a Spirit Week as we count down to the holiday break. Each day will have a different theme with Friday being Ugly Sweater Day, featuring our group sweater picture in the main gym on Friday, just prior to the premiere of our annual holiday show. Math club members created beautiful math-themed ornaments that were put on display on the Geotech Tree at the Festival of Trees. Their next event will be after-school on December nineteenth, where they will demonstrate some innovative gift wrapping techniques such as origami wrapping and ways to minimize paper usage. The Peer Mentors Club is partnering with the Send a Smile to Kids organization to decorate cards that will be sent to children spending the holidays in the hospital. They are also looking ahead and brainstorming ways to reach even more freshman mentees. Educators Rising Club members attended a field trip to the UMass Lowell School of Education this month. Students were able to view education classes in session and get a taste of campus life by visiting a dorm, dining hall, and library. The Robotics Club are working on Cyber Robotics one oh two, a new course that teaches STEM and coding topics using gamification and physically-based environment. Coding Robotics one oh two introduces autonomous systems, teaches scanning and mapping the environment, error correction methods, and different system control algorithms. Art Club students have continued to refine their trophy designs for this year's Lowell Winter Fest mural competition. They're also very excited to once again sponsor the school-wide holiday door decorating contest and are looking forward to helping choose the winners. The Outing Club visited the Stone Zoo in Stoneville, Massachusetts on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to experience their zoo-like display. This event offered a unique outdoor experience for our students in an exciting and festive atmosphere. Our Skills USA competition season kicks off this week with school-wide technical assessments taking place between December fourteenth and December nineteenth in shop, theory, and digital literacy classes. All students in all grades will participate, and the top-ranking students will move on to represent our school in the Skills USA District Competition in March. In addition, our Skills USA freshman program is meeting every Friday from two to three P M. for our ninth-grade students who want to get more involved. Six hundred twenty-five students registered to try out for one of our winter programs this season. Boys and girls basketball both dropped in narrow decisions to start their seasons this week. Girls fell to L C in overtime, while the boys also dropped in overtime thriller to Greater Lawrence. Both teams will look to rebound in the upcoming weeks. Swim and Dive opened up their season with a win over Minuteman on December eighth. The team will travel to Lynn Tech on December fifteenth. Wrestling opened up their season, taking two out of three matches in their quad meet on December ninth, with wins coming up against Concord, Carlisle, and Malden Catholic. The Griffin Grapplers will open their home slate on December thirteenth when they host Whister Tech at six P M. Hockey picked up a nice and early season win over Lowell High on December tenth. The team has big league games coming up with Shawshin and Minuteman later this week. Indoor track has over one hundred runners out this winter. The team picked right up where they left off last season with opening victories by both the boys' and girls' teams on December eleventh. Both will be in contention for the C A C crown this winter. The Cheer and Competition Dance teams have started prepping for the winter competition season. Both have also done a great job performing at home basketball games in the early season.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you very much.
Cameron, have a great holiday.
Have a good Christmas, man.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the number sixteen meeting?
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Incredible.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the warrant?
You may, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Wait, can I get a motion to approve the expenditure of five million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents? Second?
Second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Turn the, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent for a report.
Thank you. The first item on my agenda this evening is I'd like to invite our senior student, Julia Canario. Julia is medical, a senior in Medical Laboratory and Assisting Program, and she's here tonight, and we're here to celebrate Julia for something really exciting and special. Julia was selected as the first-place entry in the essay category of the twenty-third Annual M I A A Sportsmanship Essay Multimedia Contest. This award was presented to Julia on November ninth at the Twenty-Ninth Annual M I A A Sportsmanship Summit held at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. And as the winner of this competition, Julia received a four-hundred-dollar check and a recognition plaque, and she presented her essay in front of a very, very large group of individuals down at Foxborough on November ninth. And she's here tonight to be recognized by us as a committee and a school community and to share her award-winning essay with us. So I invite Julia to share her essay.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for recognizing me and all of this, and I just want to thank the school board committee, and I'll read my speech. Sportsmanship is a crucial aspect of school sports. Programs contributing to the development of character, teamwork, and respect among students. Social media, with its widespread influence, offers an excellent platform to positively promote sportsmanship in schools. This essay outlines a strategic approach to utilizing social media for this purpose. Initiating a dedicated sportsmanship campaign is the first step. Establish clear goals such as reducing unsportsmanship-like behavior or fostering a culture of respect. Define your target audience, whether it's student athletes, parents, or the border school community. To reach your intended audience effectively, select the appropriate social media platforms. Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and TikTok are popular among students and parents. Each platform has unique strengths. Tailor your content to suit their formats. Showcase real-life examples of sportsmanship within your school's sports. Share stories of athletes demonstrating acts of kindness, fair play, and teamwork. Using engaging posts and images and videos to convey these. Craft a memorable hashtag specific to your campaign. Encourage students, athletes, and supporters to use it when sharing their own sportsmanship-like-related content. This creates a sense of community and helps track campaign engagement. Actively engaging with your audience. Respond to comments, questions, and feedbacks on your social media posts. Encourage discussions about sportsmanship and provide a platform for people to share their thoughts and experiences. Partner with school athletes and sports teams to promote sportsmanship. They can share their personal experiences, insights, and stories on how sportsmanship influences their games and lives. Create and disseminate educational content about sportsmanship. Share articles, infographs, or videos that explain the concept's significance and impact on personal growth. Make this content both informative and engaging. Initiate social media contests or challenges centered around sportsmanship. Encourage students to participate and share their entries with your campaign hashtag. Provide incentives or recognition to motivate involvement. Offer glimpses into the behind-the-scenes aspects of sportsmanship, such as team pep talks, huddles, or pre-game rituals. Humanizing athletes makes the concept more relatable and helps the audience connect with it on a personal level. Leveraging social media to promote sportsmanship in schools can be a potent tool for fostering a culture of respect, fairness, and teamwork. By creating engaging content, collaborating with athletes, and actively involving the school committee, we can harness these, we can harness the power of these platforms to shape a more sportsmanlike future for our students. Thank you.
So, thank you again, Julia, for, for your essay. We're very proud of you and this achievement and for being a role model for our student athletes and for our school community. And I'd just like to share also some exciting news that Julia had just shared with me is that as a senior and moving off and looking towards the future, she was recently accepted to the nursing program at UMass Lowell, U R I, Salve Regina, and U N E. Congratulations, Julia, that's an incredible achievement, and we're proud of you, and we wish you the rest of a very successful senior year.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming tonight, congratulations.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you, Julia. The next item on my agenda is, well, is the overview of the L P M program cost increase. And I wish I had my notes here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna wing this from my, from my, from my memory. So what we're looking at here is very simple. There's a program cost sheet in your packet, and the only change to the cost for the L P M students would be a fifty-dollar graduation fee charge. This fee was collected from them at the end of the year, but after polling the students and giving them a choice if they wanted to pay the fee upfront or fundraise, they all decided that they would like to have the fee added to the cost so it's paid for upfront. So as the school year went on, they didn't have to worry about, about, about the fee. So we're just adding it to the cost of the tuition.
This is the student's choice.
And this, this is the student's choice to have it added upfront.
Okay. Any questions?
I think I have one question.
Sure.
Firstly, this is a great program. We've been offering it the whole thirteen years that I've been here, if not longer. So many prospective L P N nurses take this program, and it's very difficult. However, it's also something that can move them, progress them in their lives very well. We have three different costs. We have an in-state, we have an out-of, I'm sorry, we have an in-district, an out-of-district, and an out-of-state cost. With these costs for the out-of-district and out-of-state, the money needed upfront to start the program is about seventy-five hundred dollars. In-district, the overall cost of the program is seventy-five hundred dollars, and upfront money needed to start the program is seven thousand dollars. I'm curious if we could sort of reduce that amount to start the program for our in-district students to about sixty-five or seventy percent. The out-of-district students are paying about sixty to sixty-five percent. So I'm just hoping that, you know, sometimes, you know, residents in Lowell are trying to pay their rent, trying to feed their families, and sometimes, you know, not able to come up with as much money as they hope to. And I'm just trying to sort of make it equal for all of the students.
There is financial aid that's provided to students as well. I'm not prepared to make that decision tonight. I think that would have to avoid a discussion with the Director of Practical Nursing and, and her team.
Okay, is there some way we can hold off on this and maybe allow me to speak to her?
Well, people are registering now.
Okay. And the upfront money is only seventeen hundred dollars, but to start the program, seventeen hundred dollars for each of all of the hopeful candidates. But, you know, to start the program, which is basically next September, is you have seven thousand dollars in Lowell and seventy-five hundred, and essentially, I'm sorry, in Lowell, Drake, and Pepperell are sending districts. Seventy-five hundred for other districts outside of the state, I'm sorry, within the state, and then seventy-five hundred for out-of-state. So I'm just hoping maybe I could have a conversation.
So are you looking to, to lower the seat registration student fee? Because the other fees that add up to the cost are pretty straightforward. Textbooks.
No, no.
Drug testing, state exams.
No, basically the amount of money that's needed to start for September.
So just the down payment you're looking to?
The, the, it says upfront money needed to start the program is, the down payment is seventeen hundred dollars for all of the districts. And the upfront money essentially due September first, when the class begins, is
Seventeen hundred.
Is seven thousand dollars upfront money needed to start the program for our in-district. Right? But for the in-district, for, I'm sorry, for out-of-district, it's only seventy-five hundred dollars, even though it's eleven thousand, six hundred dollars.
But only seventeen hundred dollars is needed to be paid within two weeks of the start?
That's correct. And I'm not looking to change that at all.
Okay.
I'm just looking to change that like September one number. So it's maybe a little bit more, less costly for a resident of our district. Upfront money.
Well, there must be a purpose to that fee.
Oh, we did vote on this last year, but get it, Ralph.
There's costs for teachers, for
Go ahead, sir.
Is there some sort of numbers you might have that would indicate how many are in-district, how many are
I can provide that. I don't have it off the top of my head, no. But I can gather that information if you would like me to provide it at the next meeting or ask Christine to come to speak to that.
Yeah, we've had discussions about that over the past years.
We did last year.
Right, right. And over the, as far as students go, I think it's over fifty percent come within, within district. That was
Fifty percent from in-district?
Over, yes.
Over fifty.
It was, it was a, it was a request of the school committee.
So just following on your point that I think is well-taken. If the out-of-district, out-of-state is increased, there could be a proportional decrease on in-district.
If I'm not mistaken, we did that last year. We increased in, out-of-district and out-of-state, and we kept in-district right where it was.
That's correct.
And we listened to, was it Christine Messina, Messina? We listened to her, and we voted on this change last year to keep it here, up out-of-district, out of, out-of-state. And we kept in-district right where it's at. So if you, what do you, are you looking to go lower on in-district?
Not the overall cost.
Okay.
Just a down, just a
Just a down payment?
Down payment. It's already, it's already seventeen hundred to put down if you get accepted. But it's, it's for September first, they're asked to have seven thousand dollars of the seventy-five hundred dollar overall tuition down, where, where the out, the out-of-district student has to come up with seventy-five hundred dollars of the eleven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Well, they need thirty-five hundred by June twenty-eighth. It says there, of the seven, seven thousand, five hundred down, thirty-five hundred is due by June twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So are you looking?
To just make it five thousand for September first for our in-district students. I'm just thinking of the in-district students that sometimes come from, you know,
Yeah, no, I, I
A city that, you know, is, is
I think we should have, honestly, I think we should have Christine, we'd look at it, or you look at it and bring it back to us next month.
Would that be, would, would that be acceptable by the school committee?
To bring that
Yeah, otherwise it doesn't hurt the program.
Right, that's, that's
Like I said, I don't want to make the decision. No, I think I need to speak with Christine.
Okay.
I'm sure there's rationale.
I can invite her to the January meeting to
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Just table it.
So can we, you want to table this, you want to make a motion? Because this is only up on the fifty dollars to add the, what the students want.
Add the fifty dollars.
That's what the students, and we can always bring that back. I just, we can take the vote on this right now.
Sure.
And then next month, bring it back in, correct?
Yes.
For amendment?
I mean, I just got a motion to approve the L P M program cost beginning twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. That's just putting the fifty dollars in for the graduation.
The additional fifty dollars.
And then we can bring that back.
Yes.
Right.
All right, so can I get a, can I get a motion?
Motion?
All right, give me a second.
Yeah.
Again, that change was motivated by the
And we'll revisit it later.
Yeah, we'll revisit, we'll revisit it next month when she sits down with Christine over
And we're revisiting, changing the down payment.
For September first, when they begin.
For September first.
For the in-district students, to be more reflective of the percentage of the out-of-district as, as well as the out-of-state students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the roll call.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Per category?
Sure, yeah. Do you want to get that on record or?
Could we get some information on enrollment?
Yeah.
For next meeting?
Yeah, next, as soon as Christine says she'll have, I'm sure she'll bring it in.
Okay, so we're good. The next item on my agenda is a cooperative education report. As you see, the report that's in your folder has two hundred and five senior students participating in co-op at the end of November. I'm always happy to report that this number is a little bit higher. Currently, there are two hundred and fifteen senior students participating in co-op, which is about thirty-nine percent of the class of twenty twenty-four. Again, thank you to Stacy and to Brian Jones, who are working aggressively to provide our students with cooperative education opportunities. The next item on my agenda, as I'd like to inform the committee, that Greater Lowell has been awarded a targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant of twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and this money will be used towards professional development and training of the special education staff in regards to the implementation of the new I E P program. Any questions? The next item on my agenda is, I'm happy to say that we have been awarded another grant, the C T E Partnership Implementation Grant, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. These funds are to supplement our after-dark program by purchasing supplies for the metal fabrication and joining and welding technology area, because that is a new program that has started this year. So some of that money will be helped to offset the supplies in that program.
That's awesome.
Yes. And the final grant award, I'm excited to inform the committee that we've been awarded another grant, and the donor wishes to remain anonymous, in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. These funds are targeted towards equipment for the building trades, engineering, and automotive technology and repair.
So they're designated specifically for those programs?
Yes.
Ralph, you didn't have to stay anonymous. You could have just said it was you.
I had read in a newspaper, I think it was a Boston newspaper, there were several grants other districts received too, but we, we, we got some substantial money based on the others.
That's awesome.
My understanding.
I'm not sure if it was by the same anonymous donor that is making the donation, the grant.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic.
Making the grant funds available to us, but we appreciate the donation and the partnership, and we will continue to use the program to help keep our vocational programs up to date so our students are prepared.
It shows us that we're doing something right if we've got people that's really vested in it.
I think it shows that people value vocational technol- education and the knowledge
You see the work.
And the knowledge and skills that it provides students to go out and have a career upon graduation from high school. And it shows about the support we're getting from, from some of the grants that we've applied for, so
And we had a, a grant from an anonymous donor last year that was very large as well, correct? Over three hundred thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Well, it's all great news. People are noticing what we do.
Yeah, it's, it's great. And the last item on my, on my agenda, I'd like to invite our Director of Technology Enrollment and Information, Lisa Martinez, to provide information and answer questions regarding revisions to our admissions policy as well as information regarding our after-dark program admissions policy. So Lisa?
So each, each year, we, we actually have to get the, the school committee to approve annually our admissions policy. So what I wanted to do is just review a couple of the changes that we made. And the, the changes really to, to make things a little bit more explicit and clear for people as they read the admissions policy. So it's not any major changes to the admissions policies, just really wording changes. So if we look at our admissions policy on page one, then basically the change that we made was that, that the school committee approved on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the new admissions policy, if, if you so choose to, to approve it tonight. And then, actually, if we go on page three, again, just some language clarification and in the homeschool student area, where we want the verifiable grade supported by a portfolio, that wasn't quite as clear. So some of the feedback was from the parents was just needed to make it a little more clear what, what was needed for homeschool.
So the parents need a portfolio to submit with the homeschool student application?
Yes. As well as the grades.
As well as the grades?
Grades.
Sure. And the grades are approved by a state organization?
By the superintendent of their district.
Of the district?
Of the district.
Okay.
So they often, they also need a superintendent letter from that, from that district, okay, for, for the homeschool. So that, the only part that changed, and we just changed some of the wording to make it a little bit clearer for everyone.
Because there are a lot of homeschool students within the Lowell area. So, yeah, I understand why it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. And then on page four, there were just some repetitive language that we took out to make it a little bit clearer. And then adding the same for the online school students. We added the paragraph that is very similar to the homeschool students to, to make sure that was clear for the online students, yes.
Do you have a rough idea how many homeschool students are enrolled?
Per year? In our, in our
We don't have homeschoolers.
That, that come from homeschooling?
Oh, that come from homeschooling.
Yeah, that come from homeschooling. I would say we usually get about five applications a year, four or five applications.
And what is their acceptance rate? Is their acceptance rate the same with respect to the overall applications that are
Definitely, yes.
Roughly sixty-seven percent or something like that?
Yes. Okay, and so we also have that for, for the online on page four. Similar language for that, just to make it clear for the, for the online students. And then on page eight, again, just making some clarifying language where it says if incomplete applications are received or if there's a discrepancy in the supporting documentation, we've always worked with any discrepancies with our, our sending schools, the districts, as well as the families. We just wanted to make sure that it was in the admissions policy, so that it was clear for the parents. So we work with, if there, if there's an incomplete, we do everything humanly possible to make sure that it's a complete application as well as making sure the documentation is, is clear.
And they have twenty days to make it whole, right? Make it complete?
Yes.
Right. And with that being the case, does that go, so let's say it's incomplete and they sort of clear it all up in twenty days. Does the date of the filing of the application go to the original date when they file the application?
Yes.
Okay, not, not that twentieth day later if it took them that long?
No, no, the original date.
Terrific.
And just saying that there is a discrepancy, we'll make sure that, that there's clarification and adjustments so that we're able to work with the parents and the, and the sending schools for that. And then the next page, just the same for the, for number three, for the complete applications. That's for admissions for the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, as well as the ninth. So just making it consistent throughout. And then, and, and that's all we have for, for the Greater Lowell admissions policy. And then if you look at the after-dark policy, there's only one change, and again, just making it consistent with our policy, so it's the same. If you look on page five, it's just, again, adding if incomplete applications are received or if there's a discrepancy, the following procedures will be followed. So we made sure that was added to the after So we made sure that was added to, um, the after-dark policy as well.
When, when these changes are made, uh, does the state review them after the fact that, when the committee votes on?
Yes.
Or do they concur?
Yes. Yes, they review them.
Question, or I've never heard any questions from them, rather, rather, so with it, I'm, I'm sure it's within their purview, but we, we must be doing pretty good there.
So far, we're following all the guidelines and the regulations, so, so far, we're, we're, um, we haven't had any problems.
We're in compliance with
Yeah, we are.
Well, I, I know you, I know you're carrying up because you can, I don't know if you guys will be getting the calls, but how do I do the application? So I know your office is going to be
We are.
We're busy in the next three months, so I know you're going to be
We've been pretty busy already.
Probably already filled out applications.
Yes, we, we have many, many applications.
Yeah, I know, well, trust me, I know the parents' feedback after they talk to you is phenomenal. The office, because they're always helpful.
Oh, great.
We, I can speak for me. I know I've heard back five or six times from parents saying, you know, because I'll tell them, call the admissions office.
Right.
They'll walk you through it. You guys do an outstanding job. That's all I hear back from the parents, that you walked through, so.
Well, we appreciate it. We're here, we're here to help, uh, certainly all the people who want to apply and are interested in our school and want to learn more about technical vocational, um, education. And, um, so we're always there to provide that information.
Right, so we're going to take it as a two separate motions.
Hold on, I, I think I have one more question. Uh, Lisa, when people will submit an application, they have to have school records, attendance, discipline, and the school council recommendation, hopeful, hopefully. Um, do they go to the front office to get all that information? Or do they just submit an application and then we sort of call the school and the school sends over that information?
Right, the school sends over that information. The only thing the parent has to do is apply online and we take care of the rest. If they're from, um, not one of our sending communities, we work with those schools and the parents, um, to be able to, um, get the informations that we may, we, we need for the application.
Okay, so if, so if it's out of school, out of, out of district, let's just say Lexington wants to come to Greater Lowell Tech. They submit the application, we then call Lexington for that information?
Yes, and work with the parents and Lexington.
The parents and Lexington.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, um, you usually need, they need to usually, um, give a, um, their approval for us to receive their records.
Motion to approve the admission policy.
The Greater Lowell admission policy.
The Greater Lowell admission policy.
Twenty-four, twenty-five? Twenty-three, twenty-four, right?
Two thousand, twenty-three, two thousand
Twenty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four or two thousand twenty-five?
Twenty-five, okay, motion to approve the admission policy for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you for all the
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Now can I have a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five after-dark admission policy?
Motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five after-dark program admission policy, which mimics our COVID policy.
Do you have a second? Okay, second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everyone.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, and that's the end of my report. I just would like to wish everyone a happy holiday and extend that to our students, their families, and our community partners. Uh, we value your partnership and we look forward to a very successful twenty-four school year.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same to you. Mr. Knight, you're up.
All right, I have, the first item on my agenda tonight is seeking the, uh, committee to declare a Workhorse Screen Printing Press as surplus. It's about twenty-five years old. It's been used in the graphics department. And, um, earlier this year, their order of replacements are no longer in need of the old one. I don't anticipate that it will hold any residual value just due to the age and condition, so it'll probably just be a straight disposal.
We have a motion to approve the, uh, surplus equipment disposal. Mr. Hogan, one second. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
The next item on my agenda is to accept a donation of a display cabinet from the Sudbury Historic Society. It's an antique cabinet that the library media center, uh, intends to use to display student work.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious, uh, how, like, say, well, just Sudbury, how did they pick us?
I, you know, that's funny. I, I didn't even ask the question. I've got to imagine there's some sort of a relationship between individuals.
I suppose it could have went anywhere.
Yeah, I, it's funny you say that. I didn't really think of it until you just said it.
I, I don't know, I don't actually know how this came about.
No, that's fine, that's
No, it was an offer that was brought forward and I said, well, we got to get approval, so it's
So can I get a motion to approve the donation? Second, Ralph. There we go.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Let's make sure we send Sudbury. Thank you, Mike.
Absolutely. And the, uh, the final item on my agenda is just an update on the building expansion project. Uh, we did have a building expansion committee meeting earlier this evening, discussed the proposal that was received for the project construction. Um, and we made, uh, had a positive vote to move that forward. So, uh, we're going to begin finalizing a contract and, um, working with the proposer, um, on record and, um, hopefully and we will have that building open by August of next year, ready for the school.
Beautiful, thanks, Mike. Good job. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We have any old business? Anything on the new business? Any committee, uh, personnel motions? Any report of subcommittees?
Could we get a, for the next meeting, could we get the breakdown from the synopsis from the building committee meeting?
Yeah, she'll, she'll have the minutes. Uh, we have to go to executive session. I need a motion to enter executive session pursuant to, uh, Master of Law, three oh eight, uh, yeah, thirty-eight, thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, this best strategy respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares Greater Lowell Tech High School Committee versus Greater Lowell Legal Teachers Association Appeals Court case, number twenty-three dash P dash two twenty. Uh, I don't believe we're going to have to have any votes to come back into, after executive session. So I guess we can take the motion, well, I first need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. All right, we don't have to take any votes that come out of executive session, so
Motion to adjourn.
One second.
Second.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Merry Christmas, everyone.